You're ready to go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brisbane City Council meeting of February 28th, 2017. We have a special meeting and we'll start with the call to order. If you could please join me for the flag salute. The Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Item three, adoption of agenda.
Move adoption.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number four is public hearing, item A, Brisbane Baylands planning applications, Baylands concept plans, Brisbane Bayland specific plan, case SP-01-06, general plan amendment cases GP-01-06, GP-01-10, and related final environmental impact report, SCH number 2006 022136. The specific topics tonight include water supply, public services and facilities, and related policy issues. Universal Paragon Corporation is the applicant. Okay, so I'll just start by noting that prior to this, we did have a study session on these same topics that was open to the public. That was the opportunity for the council members to ask their questions. And so now we'll start off with the formal staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor. Members of the council, turn the presentation over to Lloyd Zola.
Thank you. Hi. So in relation to what, we'll start with water supply. And remember, there's three levels that we'll be dealing with when you deal in water supply. At the general plan level, related to the general plan amendment that's been requested, very simple question, are there water supplies reasonably likely to be available for build-out? And because that question may take you beyond anybody's actual, a water district's actual planning period, but that's the question at the general plan level. Reasonable availability of a water supply. When we get to the specific plan that's been requested by the applicant, the rules change dramatically. In relation to the specific plan, and as you consider the specific plan, you will also be considering a water supply assessment. And what that water supply assessment analyzes is projected water supply during normal years, dry years, and multiple dry years. And the question changes from is there reasonable likely supply of water to can that water supply reasonably be acquired? So is it available? Can it be acquired? Then when you get to specific development, site-specific development within the Baylands following approval of a specific plan, you're going to ask the water, is, or ask the question, is an assured supply physically available? So we go from is there water supply out there? Can it be acquired? To the final question at the time you have an actual physical development, is that assured supply available? Now, the potential action that you're being asked to take in relation to water supply, the Planning Commission has recommended land use and policies only at a general plan level. Their recommendation, remember, is denial of the specific plan. So for the Planning Commission recommendation, if you're dealing at the general plan level, there's no action that will be requested of the council in relation to water supply. If you consider approval of the specific plan, or any modifications to the specific plan, then you will be asked to also approve the water supply assessment. As City of Brisbane, as the water agency, would have to approve that water supply assessment in order to actually approve a specific plan. You will not, as part of any of your deliberations, be asked to take any action in relation to the term sheet that's already been signed with OID. So you'll be asked at the specific plan level to deal with the water supply assessment and that question, can that water supply reasonably be acquired? Now, the analysis that has been undertaken for water supply, right now you get your water from Hatch Hatchie, SFPUC. And as Randy had mentioned during the workshop, you're running close to the amount of water that SFPUC is going to supply you. And so when you look at build-out of your existing general plan, assuming even nobody does anything ever again with a new use on the Baylands, the city will need about 400 acre-feet per year of supplemental water supply. So regardless of any action you take on the Baylands, the rest of the city needs additional water supply. So that supplemental water source, additional water supply will be needed for any scenario on the Baylands, build-out of the existing general plan, the Planning Commission's recommendation, the renewable energy scenario. Obviously, a lot less water, but some new water is needed for anything because you need it regardless of the Baylands. Now, a number of different water supplies, potential water supplies were analyzed as part of the EIR and looking as part of the water supply assessment. One was maybe we look at additional water supply from SFPUC, after all, we've got a contract with them. However, they have some of the same problems. So SFPUC is out looking for supplemental water supply, and so that didn't seem to be a really reliable source to move forward with. The second idea was looking at imported water supply through a transfer agreement. And a number of different districts were considered Oakdale Irrigation District, Modesto and Turlock Irrigation District, or East Bay Municipal Water District, Municipal Utilities District. Oakdale Irrigation District seemed to have the most reliable supply, and so the water supply assessment that was done was based on that transfer concept. The other idea was looking at a Bay Area desalination facility that a number of water agencies and cities have looked at, but whether that could actually be accomplished was speculative. And so the water supply assessment that was done, and the water supply that the applicant pursued, and the city had discussed with, was based on the water transfer from OID. So there is a term sheet that the city has signed with OID, and it is just that. It's a term sheet. It's the, a framework for a water supply agreement. It is not in itself a water supply agreement. It simply says, "City of Brisbane and Oakdale Irrigation District agree that once, you know, the land use on the Baylands, we can negotiate a water supply agreement that would transfer up to about 2,400 acre-feet of water." That would include 400 acre-feet for areas outside the Baylands and up to 2,000 acre-feet for the Baylands, with a 50-year term and a 25-year extensions. And that compares to the existing agreements you have with SFPUC, which are 25-year agreements. Based on the term sheet, you are not bound or committed to actually move forward with that agreement. It is simply a term sheet that says, "We can negotiate based on these terms." Okay. This is a little graphic that shows how that water actually gets here. OID actually would transfer water that it would extract, take out of the Stanislaw River, and move it to the MID system. MID would then, Modesto Irrigation District, would then credit an amount of water, however much they received from Oakdale Irrigation, they would credit water in New Dawn Pedro Reservoir. That would then change hands. SFPUC would then own that water, and through another series of credits, they would then give the City of Brisbane credit for the 2,400 acre-feet in Hatch Hatchie. So the water that physically moves is from Oakdale Irrigation to Modesto Irrigation, and then you receive essentially the same water supply, but ownership of 2,400 acre-feet moves from Oakdale to Modesto to SFPUC to you. The key of this, and the term sheet is based on, the diversions that would occur are part of water that Oakdale Irrigation has historically taken out of the Stanislaw River. They've historically taken 41,000 acre-feet for a series of customers. That water is now available to other customers. So essentially, somebody else was owned, they were selling the water to somebody else, now they'll sell it to you. But the water that, the 2,400 acre-feet comes out of that 41,000 historical, it's not in addition to. The other basic rule under state law is the way the water moves from SFPUC and all the credits that occur cannot create any impacts on the OID system, on the Modesto system, or the San Francisco system, which means that there's a whole lot of engineering and design to be done as to how water would actually move and what amounts at what times, in a normal year and a dry year, multiple dry years, because somebody is going to be asked to take water from the Stanislaw River, substitute it for another supply, different water quality. And so following, as part of the, following the action that you would take on land use, there's a lot of design work to be done to get that operational plan in place. Now, one impact that we know would occur from this system occurs right below Hatch Hatchie Reservoirs, part of the SFPUC's master plans for water. We know that in the, there's a valley, the Poopinow Valley, sitting below Hatch Hatchie. And as water is taken out and moved through Hatch Hatchie Reservoir, there's kind of, there's a regime of water releases that need to be done to scour and flood a valley. And so part of what would occur with this water supply of 2,400 acre-feet, a portion of it would be used to occasionally flood that valley, which is one of the requirements that San Francisco SFPUC will have to expand the amount of water that they're moving through Hatch Hatchie Reservoir. In other words, if you just took a nice even flow and kept it in the stream, the meadows on each side of the river die. So they have to flood the meadows. And you would, by increasing the amount of water that would come through Hatch Hatchie Reservoir, you would have to contribute to the mitigation measure for that. The question had been asked, and we saw a lot of comments and occurred at the Planning Commission, how do these two pieces fit together? A water supply agreement and specific plan and development. And the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and what we know is that how this water actually flows and moves to the city, like with a lot of the Baylands, depends on what are the uses and what is the actual water demand? What's the outcome of the land use decision? Because if we're looking at the developer-sponsored plan and having to move 2,400 acre-feet as opposed to a much lower density that might have 500 acre-feet for the city, or 400 acre-feet for the city and 500 for the Baylands, moving 900 acre-feet, moving 2,400 acre-feet are very different regimes. So the recommendation of the commission is that, deal with the general plan level. What is the land use? What is the direction we're giving for preparation of a specific plan? Then develop the operational plans as to how water would move through the systems. Develop the project-specific environmental impact report for the water transfer agreements, which SFPUC absolutely will require before they sign any agreement. They want to know exactly what that regimen is. And so you would actually then go through, how does the water supply physically move? Environmental impact report. Then you would consider the specific plan. Formal agreements would then be signed before physical water actually moves to the site. So the protection that the city would have is if this agreement would never occur, so we go through the analysis of how water physically moves, and then one or more parties say, you know, this just isn't going to work. You'd have a specific plan, potentially, that didn't have a water supply, and you would not approve any site-specific development, and the direction to the developer would be, the landowner would be, you got to find a new water supply. And we start that process all over again with a new water supply. So questions had come up also about the reliability of this supply and what happens in a drought. The water supply that OID is offering is pre-1914 water rights. In the water world, 1914 was a big date because I think that's when they started actually rationing out water and started fixing water rights. So pre-1914, pre-1914 water rights become, come before everything afterwards. And so they can actually, OID divert water without any restriction before all the other post-1914 water rights users. And diversions only occur in very, very limited circumstances, anything going to pre-1914. And we talked about that this is water that has historically been diverted.
Can I digress a little bit? Lloyd, has that ever been challenged?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Yep.
Maybe Allison, you want to comment on that?
Has OID's senior water right ever been challenged?
Pre-water rights to where they could do whatever they want, has that, has that ever been challenged anywhere?
I can't address that for you tonight, but I'd be happy to get back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Now, in terms of water infrastructure, obviously, there's going to be a substantial increase in demand, and the water facilities that are out on the Baylands are not going to work. So there'd be an all-new water system, which would also require construction of an off-site water storage facility. The Public Works Department has determined the elevation it would need to be, but has not looked at acquiring a site. There will be some environmental challenges to that. I mean, trying to locate a tank site up in the hills is going to require some mitigation. It's going to be relatively expensive, but the developer will be required to pay for the full cost of that facility, and that facility also would be tied to your overall system. So it wouldn't be something isolated only for the Baylands. There were questions also about recology, which is now served by, with water by the SFPUC, and that would likely continue just because the majority, so much of it is now in San Francisco. The developer-sponsored plan in all four scenarios also proposed a recycled water plant that would produce recycled water to be used for irrigation within the Baylands. And the concept there is to balance the amount of wastewater coming in and the demand for irrigation water coming out. And with the, any of the four scenarios, that balances out pretty well. But in order to really operate the plant, you'd need enough wastewater coming in to make it reasonable or feasible to run that plant. And so it looks like it takes about three-quarters of the build-out to actually, to you could open up that, that plant. You wouldn't build a real small plant that might be functional if you know you're going to have a very large demand later. So that's the way it's set up in the environmental impact report right now. And as, if you looked at some of the lower-intensity alternatives, then the design of a recycled water plant, if it would be feasible, would need to be very different than what we're talking about here. In terms of wastewater, the EIR looks at wastewater services being provided in the manner that they are now with Bay Shore Sanitary District being the wastewater provider. The EIR did not look at any options or alternatives to that. And recology being served by the SFPUC for wastewater services. Obviously, there's going to be all-new infrastructure needed, and one of the requirements for any wastewater flows out of Brisbane into San Francisco system is that separate wastewater and stormwater systems be provided. San Francisco has an old-style combined system, and your flows going into San Francisco wastewater would not have stormwater included in the wastewater going to, into SFPUC system.
Yeah, I don't think our current system has stormwater other than stuff that infiltrates.
Correct. Yeah, you've been, this is the same role that you've been following.
Yeah.
In terms of stormwater drainage, put a lot of buildings on a site, increase the amount of impervious surface, there's going to be substantial increase in stormwater flow, and that would mean increasing capacity of the existing channel culvers at the railroad crossing, and essentially new infrastructure put in. All the physical infrastructure that will be required is paid for by the developer. We talked about police services in the workshop, and obviously, under any of the scenarios, there's going to be a substantial increase in calls. And because of the substantial new area that would be added to police patrol, so even at the very basic level, any new development in the Baylands is going to require a new patrol officer 24/7. And in order to hit four different shifts and then provide coverage when officers are on vacation, in court, sick, or training, you'd actually need for, to put one car 24/7 on the street. One officer requires five new officers to be hired, and then some additional support officers. So again, depending on the amount of land use, there will be substantial expansion needed to the police department, along with potentially a storefront substation, depending on the land use. You would not need facilities at the central station here for any of the scenarios that would be taken up in a potential substation. For fire protection, there would be a substantial increase in calls, much more so if there's a residential as part of the future development as opposed to just commercial industrial uses. And for both police and fire, the requirement would be to prepare a police protection services plan, a fire protection services plan that would lay out specifically how facilities and equipment would be put into place, would also deal a phasing of additional officers on, in the police department, then would also be part of in terms of fire, working with the fire authority to determine, based on the specific uses that would be proposed, what, how would they actually meet their facilities, their performance standards that are based on both distance to station, running time to station, ability to respond? And because, particularly in fire, there's a number of stations they would have to look at, that would be a little bit involved in the station that you have now. Would that be adequate? Would they need to add companies? And that would be part of the plan that would be done as a requirement of a specific plan prior to the time you approved any site-specific development. In terms of schools, under any of the scenarios, even if there's no residential, and this is one of the interesting things in terms of schools, there will be a substantial increase in enrollment at the Bay Shore District, as well as Jefferson High School District. And under state law, and the reason I say it with or without residential is, under state law, there is a provision that allows parents to register their children for school based on place of employment. And kind of a nifty thing in state law that was done primarily so developer fees could be charged to commercial industrial projects, because otherwise there isn't a real good nexus. So actually, the employment that's generated within a district can directly increase student employment, and then they pay a fee. Now, also under state law, Leroy Green Act, SB 50, payment of fees is mitigation in full. And so as a city, you are restricted from saying, "We're not going to approve a project because there's not adequate school." Payment of that fee is all the mitigation that you can require. And that's not to say, in the middle of a development agreement discussion, that you can deal with, you know, you need to go talk to a developer, they ought to go talk to the school district, but you don't have the ability to impose requirements that schools shall be done this way. Another part of this is that the Planning Commission, they asked the question, what portions of the Baylands meet state standards for school siting? And that analysis is summarized in your staff report, and the answer is, when you run through all of the basic requirements of school siting, there is no place on the Baylands you can put a school. That is different to say than a school would never be approved on the Baylands, because the way that the state standards work is for any one of the issues, noise, location in relation to pipelines, location in relation to the rail line, additional safety studies and mitigation measures can be done. And so the fact that nothing nominally meets the state standards, the state superintendent of schools could still review mitigation plans and put additional requirements on the siting of a school, but it would take the state superintendent of schools to actually approve a school site. District couldn't do it on its own. In terms of library, obviously, in terms of residential, 4,000 dwelling units is proposed in the developer-sponsored plan, is a major increase in population for library. Commercial does not put hardly any demand on schools, and there is a requirement in the EIR for provision of a library on the Baylands, or by the Baylands, I guess would be the better way of saying that. Solid waste collection is part of what's analyzed. The majority of the Baylands is under the recology franchise, and the city has a series of standards, state requirements, actually exceeds state requirements regarding recycling. Key considerations for public services and facilities. One, capital facilities, the building of things, buying of equipment necessary for all of these services and facilities and all of this infrastructure, paid for by the developer. So net cost to the city of buying stuff and building stuff is zero. The cost for operations and maintenance is, a cost-revenue study is being done, and that is one of the meetings that we'll have to talk about. What kinds of revenues would, could you expect from the Baylands based on the land uses being proposed as opposed to costs? And that also changes over time, the cost-revenue, day one, year one is very different than a build-out, and Kaiser Marshall will be here to answer all of your questions regarding those kinds of issues. But that is one of the things to consider as you get to deliberations. The other potential is using various types of assessment district financing, such as Melrose Community Facilities District, Landscape Maintenance Districts. But in terms of capital financing, cost to the city still should be, everything borne by the developer, no matter whether they use facilities, districts, or not. So the Planning Commission recommendation, same as in all, you know, as they've looked at just, just about any issue, reducing the amount of development that's creating demand for public services and facilities. They also recommend acquiring, setting up a system that ties the amount of development to providing appropriate infrastructure, a better phasing plan, but establishing performance standards so that you know if one building comes in, you can then determine, if you have to meet all of these standards, here's how you go do it. And standards can be, are available for all the various types of services and facilities, fire department, water, and all of those things. The other part of the recommendation is to specify that relationship between water supply and development, and get that into the general plan so that process of what needs to be done and what order, and what needs to be available. done and what order and what needs to be available to the city in terms of considering a specific plan be laid out in the general plan along with preparation of police and fire services plans, and so that those recommendations can then become part of specific plan when you get to that. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any additional questions that haven't yet been answered? Clark?
I just have one clarification, and I didn't, I don't know, I didn't hear the answer. I think, Terry, you asked this question earlier, and this would be to staff, to Randy. Would there, end of the day, you have a development out there and you get water rights and everything that, and so the development's built, would there be two different water rates or would it be melded into one? And this maybe?
I don't think we've taken it that far yet, sir. I think I could certainly imagine a scenario where there might be two different rates where we might have to establish a special district who would depend on the final arrangements that come out of the water purchase deal. It just strikes me as highly unlikely that we're going to purchase water at the exact same price that we currently purchase it from at SFPUC. There's going to be wheeling charges and such. So it's potential the cost will be higher, so that's not going to be amortized by the, I don't see a scenario where that's amortized by the existing users of the system.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, I mean, we've looked at this question kind of more theoretically a number of years ago, and Clark, I think you may have been involved with that, but, I mean, there's different ways this could play out, and it may be advantageous to the city and its existing users to have a system melded together in terms of just one system. So it could play out either way. I think Randy is speaking specifically to the idea that you wouldn't want to have to subsidize a new development.
Right.
And certainly, we would not want to do that.
Wouldn't be too popular, would it?
No, but the other way around, you know, it might, you know, because you're talking about, you know, what's the word, the economy of scale.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if you get a greater economy of scale, which can actually drive price down or cost down.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madison?
I have around four or five questions. Do you want me to ask them by topic?
I think before we went topic by topic, but I think in the interest of time and since we want to get to the public comment, we're going to have all the council questions at once. So you can arrange them by topic, but then go through them all.
Okay, no, that's fine. Just pull them all out. Okay, so my first question is related to windsurfing. Actually, I didn't really talk about this at the study session. So based off of what I was reading from the minutes of the Planning Commission hearings, seems like there was some argument over whether the evaluations of the impacts were correct. And I guess the conclusion was that by developing, the impacts to windsurfers would be less insignificant, but many members of the windsurfing community as well as members of our community expressed that they felt that those numbers were inaccurate and that there would be a substantial impact. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out what is the truth, where, what are the impacts? Because it seems like a slight percentage change, let's say from 16 miles an hour down to 15 miles an hour, 13 miles makes that area unusable without additional more expensive equipment.
Just through the chair.
Can I just interrupt?
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to interrupt for just one moment. I believe that windsurfing is covered in the Recreation Chapter, which is on the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh, because it was, okay.
So just for interest of the public who wouldn't be attending tonight if that's what they're interested in hearing about, perhaps we could wait until the next meeting to discuss?
Okay.
Windsurfing?
It is in this section, so.
It is in this section, but we're not.
In the Public Services Section?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, there's a whole slideshow deck, and then also in the minutes for the meeting in which they discussed.
At the Planning Commission meeting, we had taken Recreation on the same night as Public Services and Facilities, so if you're looking at.
So should I hold off then, or?
Yeah, it's not in the Public Services Chapter. It's in the Recreation Chapter, which, like Lloyd said, may have been taken on the same night at Planning Commission, but in your schedule, it's not being, it's not being considered tonight, it's next meeting.
Okay, so will staff, because we're told to read, you know, this section for tonight, so can staff make a note for the next meeting to add in the pages that windsurfing is, because some of it is covered under this, right?
Yes, in the EIR, Recreation is included there, but what we will do for the next staff report, when we get to Recreation, will go through the issue that was raised, the methodology that was used in the EIR that was questioned by the Windsurfing Association, and then we actually did a fairly substantial amount of research into what would have to be done to create the model that was being asked for, and so we'll be able to report on that, and that will be in your next staff report, and we can walk through.
Okay, I'll bring that back then. The next question is related to page 336, and we may have already gone over it a little bit, but I'd like to get into more detail. In section 12 on page 336, there are some statements made, and it says, "Brisbane Needs Water Year Round. How can the transfer be facilitated when MID canals only operate during irrigation season?" So this is the letter that MID sent, I guess, back in 2013. So, and this was also mentioned during public comment during the Planning Commission hearings. So how does this impact the flow of water? Because it sounds like this is a concern of MID.
Right, and that's part of the operations plan that would need to be done once a total flow is known based on what is the land use that's being supplied at the Baylands. Basically, the way that it would work is whatever flow amount is ultimately needed for the Baylands and the rest of the city does not come in equal amounts 365 days a year. There are periods of time when Oakdale Irrigation will want to move water to Modesto, and it may be several months' worth of supply being moved at a time. And then the question is, from Modesto's standpoint, having to look at what is their typical supply and their reservoirs, and how does it move, and who's holding what water? What does that mean for storage capacity in every reservoir along the line? And all of that is part of the operations plan that would need to be prepared prior to any agreements, because it's just, and it's all based on the starting point, which is, and how much water, is it 2,400 acre-feet, 900, or somewhere in between? But each district will have requirements on when they can accept water and also when they can move water.
Okay, so basically, they just budget that, they know that that's going to be the situation, so they will pull the amount that's needed in advance to get through that certain period of time.
Correct. So you would have an operation agreement that would say, for example, Oakdale will move this amount of water to MID based on these circumstances at this time of year, and that way, Modesto would fit that number into their operations plan, and it becomes a negotiation of who can accept how much when and who can move how much when. And that's why the commitments made to each of the districts is that operations plan would have no impact on their operations to their existing customers, because none of the districts are going to say, "Yeah, we'll sacrifice our existing customers so we can move Brisbane's water." So that will have to be done in a manner that each district's water comes first, and then we would work through how Brisbane's water moves through each system on top of meeting the individual district's needs.
So my last couple of questions are related to schools. So on page 12 of the staff report, item E says, "The school site shall not be adjacent to a road or freeway that any site-related traffic and sound level studies have determined will have safety problems or sound levels which adversely affect the educational program." And I was thinking back to last meeting, we were obviously talking about noise and pile driving, so this is kind of connected with that. I assume that obviously, you know, pile driving would create an inability for children to be able to focus and learn, because if they worried about noise from freeway, I assume they'd be concerned about pile driving even though it's not specifically stated here. So my assumption is that if there are schools that are built, they'd have to be done towards the end of the build-out, because, you know, if we're looking at 20 years of pile driving, those children would be negatively impacted by that level of noise. Am I correct in that assumption?
There's a couple of ways of doing it. One would be pushing schools late in the process, the other one would be pushing the pile driving and setting the foundation here early in the process. And this is the reason that you would go through as part of the siting, how could this property, the 700-something acres of the Baylands, meet this standard in relation to the existence of the rail line, the freeway, and the need for pile driving? And then it becomes incumbent on the developer of the site to work out a system where construction would be done, schools would be designed to meet this standard.
Okay, because this is technically, I mean, this doesn't specifically say pile driving as something that would be looked at, but I assume that if noise is important and that's something that's being considered, then pile driving probably would be related to item E.
Yeah, so it'd certainly be one of the discussions, and E in the regular type, that is the entirety of the standard. So the standards are, in some cases, general, and they would have to be applied site by site, and in this site, pile driving would be one of the considerations.
Okay. And my last question is on page 13. Basically, it talks about where to put a school. So the top of the page, it says, "The presence of very high liquefaction hazards as well as the need for a 1,500-foot setback from the Kinder Morgan Tank Farm and potentially a 1,500-foot setback from the Caltrain Line could preclude location of a school within the Baylands. However, it should be noted that applicable regulations cited above are not absolute." CCR Title V, Section 14010U permits the governing board of the school district to request that the state superintendent of public instruction grant an exemption to any of the standards in this section if the district can demonstrate that mitigation of specific circumstances overrides a standard without compromising a safe and supportive school environment. So even though there's an exemption that can be granted, what if the school board determines that these regulations are important to ensuring the safety of students and does not ask for an exemption? Would that mean that therefore no school, if the school board found these things to be important, then no school would be able to be located in the Baylands and therefore our existing schools would have to be able to make room for those students, or they'd need to be looking at creating a school on a different site?
Yeah.
Because they're still going to have, either, you know, the developer-proposed plan, that would still require the need for an institution, right?
Correct. The starting point is, other than high school, K through A, there's not room in existing schools to put as many students as would come out of the developer-sponsored plan. So the question is, would the schools to serve that population be within the Baylands or off-site? And the school district by itself can't just say, "Well, we think the studies are adequate," because ultimately, they don't get to decide. That would have, it would be a request to the state superintendent who could say, "Yes, we agree," or, "No, district, you're wrong." And so the ultimate decision would be made at the state superintendent, and the issue would be where are the schools located within the Baylands or elsewhere?
Okay, so they can choose, they can choose to put a school obviously not on the site.
Yes.
They would have to just find somewhere, somewhere else, because it looks like item H, there's very high liquefaction hazard throughout except for Ice House Hill, and then seems like still with Kinder Morgan Tank Farm and then Caltrain, it seems like there are a lot of things going on that might make it, where a school district may think that's too much of a liability to put a school in those, in the designated area where it could go.
And ultimately, it's the district's decision.
Right.
Not ultimately, it's the district's decision whether they make that request to the state superintendent of schools and his decision or her decision to agree or not agree.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
May I follow up on the, on the school subject that Madison broached? It all comes down to, we can't enforce a school to be built whether on the site or anywhere else. The only responsibility is that the school district fee is paid directly to the school district, but we can't have any input, legal binding input, on how they use that money to take care of the children.
Correct. You though have, you have land use authority, but you do not have authority over where and how the schools are built.
Or if they're built.
Or if they're built. Well, some kind of school's going to have to be built because that many kids are going to have to be in schools somewhere. And so the district, it would be incumbent on the district to, they would be required to find space for the children coming out of the Baylands.
Well, that could be through increased class size or many different methods if they needed to.
Correct.
If there wasn't money to fund it. So, and we've seen that happen throughout the state's history where class sizes have, you know, gone way up depending on the economics.
Class sizes have gone up, temporary buildings. Yeah, I went to school for a couple of years in trailers that were called classrooms, I think.
Me too.
We still have those, don't we?
My daughter spent her freshman year in Portables.
Mm-hmm. That's all the follow-up to Madison.
Okay. Did you have any further questions, Madison?
No.
Okay. Terry, do you want to ask your questions now?
Sure, I can ask some of them. Part of what we discussed in the subcommittee was the amount of calls for the police on page 279 of the Planning Commission report, that we would expect two to three times the calls, and would need that kind of variation of shifts for the police officers. And I thank you for touching on that about how many we'd need, and I had wanted an explanation between a beat and a 24/7, and I don't think your comment addressed.
Okay.
The beat is.
Right, so there are two different things going on. One is how many officers would be needed, and the basic level for any new development in the Baylands is adding one 24/7 officer, which means to have one officer there, you need five. The other thing that would occur is a geographic area, a geographic area issue of what areas they patrol. And so with there being very little call for service now in the Baylands, the city has handled it as a single geographic area. As you would get more and more calls on the Baylands, police would look at organizing in two separate geographic areas, two separate beats, so that each officer would not be trying to patrol the entirety of the city. But beats are just a geographic organization of how patrol is handled.
On page 283, they discuss the libraries and that no library would be needed until half of the units being built is under the developer's plan. And so is there a capacity built into that now, or would that need to be later addressed where the first build-out, whether it be homes or offices, prepay into those funds so that when they get to Phase Two, and it may not be just for libraries but for police and other services, that there's a fund set aside during the initial phase rather than wait till they're halfway done and? that there's a fund, a set aside during the initial phase rather than wait till they're halfway done and, and.
It's a matter of, of how you would set up the implementation procedures and that was one of the concerns of the commission, their deliberations. You could set it up that monies were set aside on, on a building permit basis. So for each building permit, this much money is set aside. And then you would essentially use those funds. If you were building a library, another way of doing the requirement is to simply say that at some point, the library shall physically be in place if the developer put it there. That's would be part of the uh, what we'd want to see in a specific plan and one of the recommendations of the commission is how do you tie the availability of the amenities that are being offered by the project to the actual amount of development of being there. So, the mitigation measure that's there is uh, would be essentially superseded if you followed, you know, went with the commission's recommendation of a set of performance standards that would lay out how each of these facilities come into, into place.
And then they also, in mitigation measure four point oh dash one A, um, it just talks about um, water delivery before any building permits are issued for habitable structures. Does that mean occupied structures or homes?
It, it would mean any kind of structure that a person would be in that would try to find a water fountain or some source of, source of water. There may be certain buildings such as storage buildings that would not be um, occupied by people on a normal basis, but any building that requires plumbing would require this supply to be in place.
Okay. So, just to be aware that when we're discussing the police and the fire, um, that doesn't affect our SEQA or if the EIR is adequate because they aren't SEQA issues. So that only comes into play that we should discuss those if we are um, looking at us, the general plan portion.
I'll, I'll say it a little bit differently. The, the, the applicable threshold under SEQA is not do we require new off, you know, does the city require new officers? The SEQA threshold is, does the project require new facilities that would have an impact on the environment? So, looking at how many officers are needed was the kind of the prelude to getting, what kind of facilities do we need? Substation that would be required as part of all the construction on the Baylands. Had the finding been, oh, you've now got to go and look at expanding the station that's here, the main station, then the EIR would have been required to look at that. So, since the existing uh, main police station is adequate for um, expansion or for development in the Baylands, that is, there's no SEQA part to the police and that's the reason that there's a recommendation for facilities and service plan as opposed to a mitigation measure.
And that's the same with the fire, so.
Exactly. And, and those performance standards and the requirement for those plans, the recommendation of the commission is to put the requirement for those plans to be done into the general plan and then they, those plans would actually be considered as part of the specific plan.
So, I know we're not really talking about financing, but it is discussed in the chapters we're reviewing. The Melrose districts and um, special service districts and then also um, enhanced infrastructure districts. And I'd sort of like to get a breakdown on what those districts means, what, what their definitions are and who, and how that payment is structured for um, the development and for, of the infrastructure, water and um, public services.
There's a, a, a number of different kinds of districts that can be looked at. Some are for water and sewer infrastructure, some for others. I think it'd probably be best if we came back with a list of all the different districts that you might look at that would be or that might be looked at for capital facilities and then there's others that would be like a landscape maintenance district that can be used for maintaining parks, parkways and so on. So, we could get you that whole list with all the various nuances of them. Lester and Randy wants to try and answer that now.
And I have an add-on question to that. So it talks about the Melrose district and how there have to be a certain number of qualified electors. But because there aren't any residents out there yet, that there would be some challenge to establishing such a district. Can you explain that?
Yeah, what happens is in a Melrose district, they're often done where there's nobody living out there. I mean, they're, they're sometimes used for, where they're used for infrastructure within an existing area where you have people already registered to vote. It's by registered voters. If it's only, if there's no registered voters, then the vote to establish the district is by property owner.
At the Baylands.
So, yeah, so if a, if a Melrose district were considered out there, uh, property owners would, would vote on um, the district.
And what if there aren't enough property owners out there?
I don't think there's a minimum number of, of property.
Oh, okay.
Because I know some districts, it's kind, kind of nifty on some projects, somebody just owns a huge piece of property. They can with the consent of the agency, they're the only voter. They have a hundred percent of the property and.
So, I was going to follow up on that, but with um, we have supposedly twelve registered voters in the Baylands.
Right.
Um, although I don't know where they're living. But the way that it would work is based on parcel size and you round up by how many acres it is on how many votes you get. So if you were a three point one acre landowner, you would get four votes. And if you're, um, so basically the the landowners could vote themselves a special district and a funding district and do bonds.
And they could file bonds, but all of that needs to be with the consent of, of the city. They can't just go.
Right, but we would be the overlying agency and then the county would be the taxing or the collection agency in a Melrose.
Correct.
That's what I sort of wanted to get explained, but.
Then I started thinking, there's a whole bunch of other districts that are slightly different, so.
Okay.
Well, yeah, in a Melrose district, you, you vote by acreage, so uh, if you own a hundred percent, you get a hundred percent of the vote. Otherwise, you, you vote your acres instead of one person, one owner, one vote.
And that is a, a method of possible um, remediation on the landfill site to, to do it that way by passing on to future property tax.
It's a, yeah, it's a source of funding that could be used.
When we come back, I'd really like to hear a little bit more from uh, on the financial side of the, the newer um, enhanced infrastructure districts from, perhaps from Stuart who might have information on those and how they work and what the length of terms are and what the, because the city a lot of times will be the underlying agency, what the um, possible um, impacts if the debt isn't made or the service isn't made because timing of the project doesn't work out, so. And I think the other um, questions I have, I'd rather wait until after public comment.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. All right. So I have a couple of questions regarding water. So, um, in, in your presentation, you talked about the, that the city just itself would need the four hundred acre feet per year to um, uh, provide water for the rest of build-out in, within the city and not including the Baylands. Um, if you don't have the Baylands processed, just, you know, project doesn't happen. We need, and you know, we want to build out Sierra Point, uh, we have Parkside. You know, how do we, what mechanisms do we have in place to get the four hundred uh, square feet per year?
That's a random question.
I, I, I'm sorry, sir. What mechanism do we have to get the four?
Yeah, so what, what would be the process? Would we just go to SFPUC and say it, we need a hundred now and then we might need another hundred later and as the, as development, uh.
I, I find that highly unlikely that SFPUC would change. In fact, in, in order to do that, they would have to change the water supply agreement amongst all twenty-six entities that are member agencies of Bousco. So it, it, it's very unlikely that we do it. If it, there is some movement right now. I'm, I'm sure many of you have been tracking the shortage of water supply that East Palo Alto's had. And so there, a couple of cities, Mountain View most noticeably has been in arrangements with them in conversation to try and transfer a portion of their supply guarantee that they're not presently using. So I would think that would be more likely, particularly when you're talking about something on the order of, you, you know, the, the four hundred. It's, it's not very much water. It's, it's possible that you could get that much on your own from another existing member agency.
Okay, good. And then um, you know, we talked about uh, you know, water recycling plants and, you know, maybe the twenty-four hundred or the two thousand um, square foot or um, acre foot per year requirement for the Baylands might not be needed. Is there a minimum amount that Oakdale would, would require in order to have a deal with us?
I'm sorry, that, that who would need?
The Oakdale Irrigation District. I mean, is there like a minimum? I mean, we have this twenty-four hundred. But is there a minimum that they would want to sell or, I mean, it's got to be in their best interest to, to do a deal.
I, I'm sure there is, sir, but we haven't entered in those conversations.
Okay. You're not aware of any kind of minimum?
No, sir, I don't know a minimum yet.
All right. Okay. And then um, in regards to the schools, so um, because the, the Baylands is within the Bay Shore School District, the Brisbane Elementary School District would not receive any property tax revenue uh, from the build-out of the Baylands. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. But within a development agreement, knowing that the Bay Shore District is um, within the Baylands and our school district would not receive any funds, that could be something that the city could negotiate with the developer. Some kind of funding mechanism that we could use towards helping some of uh, the children that would be attending our school district because even in the, the no residential development, there's still going to be an impact. And I would assume that there would be a similar impact uh, to our school district, you know, if there was residential.
Yeah, the, a, a discussion between you and the developer as part of, of a development agreement could be had in relation to what kinds of benefits would the developer be willing to offer to Brisbane District? I know that in at least one area of the state, there was an issue where um, city was looking at major development and the specific plan, they were looking at multiple specific plans at the same time. School district boundary ran right through the middle of those specific plans. And there was an agreement among the districts because it's next to impossible to move a school district boundary. But um, in that case, the developers engineered an agreement with the two school districts as to which projects would go to which school district and how they would get benefits um, for both districts out of it. But it's a negotiation that in that case would be had not only with you and the developer, but you should also include both school districts in that. Because you, you, when you're talking about benefits going to a school district over and above taxes, that gets to be very sensitive.
Okay, all right. Okay, it would be a challenge. All right, and you talked about, uh, you know, the potential new school. If one was to be built, it could be off-site. Um, that the, but that would be a, a K through eight or elementary school type of, not, not a non-high school school.
Non-high school, yeah. So there would need to be school, we'll, we'll say one or more for students grades K through eight in whatever configuration ultimately the district determined.
Because there's plenty of capacity within the Jefferson Union High School District for any of these development scenarios.
Yes, I mean, there's, there's not enough students that would be generated to support an entire high school. Um, but certainly there's, there's enough for elementary schools and, and middle schools and whatever configurations the district's determined.
Okay. You know, you talked about, uh, you know, libraries uh, and, and the need to, to build the library. What about other public buildings, say museums or um, recreational, like gyms or um, perhaps a health and wellness center for folks in Brisbane as well as out in the Baylands?
Those would all be part of, of your general plan policies as well as review of the specific plan. There's not a nexus that at such and such a level of development, you need a museum. And so SEQA isn't, isn't covered.
That would be part of a development.
So that's, that's part of your planning review and you would look at for whatever level of development you wanted to see in the Baylands, what is the level of amenity that needed to be provided? And that's, then becomes a planning negotiation to get the nexus between the two and then a discussion as part of a development agreement to get more citywide facilities.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, you know, I mean, you're right, you know, making that nexus, you know, whether you know, the museum is an educational thing, you know, or you want, you know, recreational activity, you know, to keep the community healthy.
Right. And, and remember, as part of your hearings, there's two different reviews that you're going through here. One is the SEQA review that is based on what are the physical impacts of the project and what mitigation is required essentially to make the community whole. Then you have another part of your deliberations that will be planning oriented. What is in the best interest of our community? What makes a good project? What works for us? What's our vision of what's out at the Baylands? Separate from the impacts. So it's really the, the planning vision that needs to take the lead. And then the, the SEQA comes in be, not in behind, will help inform what are the physical improvements or mitigation measures we need for the vision. And that's one of the reasons a lot of the issues that we've talked about, even in relation to impacts, revolve around what's the land use because there's huge differences in required, in impacts and mitigation between the developer-sponsored plan with a large residential component and the planning commission's recommendation that has a relatively modest amount of commercial use along with a renewable energy component.
Okay. Um, you know, in regards to wastewater infrastructure, so um, the Bay Shore Sanitary District, you know, handles the Baylands. And then in central Brisbane, I guess the ridge also is the Bay Shore Sanitary District as well, correct?
Randy has it.
The ridge is part of the Bris, the Bay Shore Sanitary District? Randy?
A very, very small portion of it is, but the, the Bay Shore Sanitary District agreed to allow us to provide, provide service to it because they didn't have any lines reaching out to it.
Okay, all right. So then, you know, goes to the Brisbane Sanitary District, which then um, goes to the SFPUC wastewater treatment facility.
Right.
So, um, if we were to have a wastewater treatment facility built out on the Baylands, we would then have to work with these different entities to, to negotiate doing kind of undoing some of those relationships if that was something that we wanted to do.
I think the, the simple answer is yes. What's proposed right now and analyzed in the environmental impact report is a water recycling facility and not a sewer treatment plant because a sewer treatment, sewage treatment plant, you then need to deal with outfall. And so right now, the plan is um, to have a water recycling facility and excess wastewater through that plant would then be discharged and solids would be discharged to SFPUC for treatment as it is right now.
Okay. All right. And then in regards to stormwater drainage, um, you, part of our open space plan could incorporate the um, the proper um, handling of, of stormwater before it goes to the bay.
Not could, it will.
It will. I mean, yeah, I mean.
There are, yeah, there's. There's a series of requirements regarding water quality that must be met. Um, and so that would be part of any drainage plan to maintain the appropriate water quality for discharge into the bay.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of other questions, but I'll wait until after the public has a chance to speak.
Thank you. Okay, so I have one question. So, um, that hasn't been answered because we did have the study session beforehand. So, the report, um, the materials talk about a maintenance and a maintenance district that can be set up to pay for infrastructure and public improvements. can be set up to pay for infrastructure and public improvements. I assume that's similar to what we've done at Sierra Point with the landscape.
Typically, a maintenance district would be set up to maintain parkways, medians, landscaping, if you had a residential component and parks. But in all of the scenarios, even without residential, there's open space in parks. And so a landscape maintenance district could theoretically be set up to maintain all of the open space.
Right. So my question is, even if we were able to get the developer to pay for construction of some public buildings, whatever they may be, like say, for example, they build a gymnasium out there or, you know, some community center of some sort, you know, it's not just a question of building it, but operating it going forward. You know, as we know, we had the, a developer build our pool as well as our Mission Blue Center, which are lovely, both facilities, but the pool requires a lot of maintenance and has a, you know, high maintenance, ongoing costs, which the city bears that cost of. So my question is, through the construction of a maintenance district or some other mechanism, is there any way to require perhaps the property owners out there to pay for the ongoing maintenance costs of the facilities that are paid for by the developer to be constructed?
I think the answer is probably not. Well, let's do it this way. Property owner being the developer to get online for payments over time, probably not because he's not going to necessarily be the property owner. In some cases, there are requirements for maintenance of facilities by a property owners' association so that as buildings are sold to individual developers of individual sites, they're required to maintain certain things. And city attorney can answer this, but I know in one project we're working on, they're looking at making the city in that case party to the property owners' association, which would then give the city the ability to enforce the CCNRs.
Right.
So there are ways of getting to that. That's an issue you would look at, not at a general plan level, but that would be part of the specific plan review. One of the things that should be in a specific plan would be a description of, and how are we going to maintain all of these things? That would also, or could be also part of a discussion that you would have as part of a development agreement. So how does all this get maintained? And then you will also, you could also look at that as part of the cost-revenue studies that are done. How do we essentially shift costs that would otherwise be on the city off of the city that would enhance the cost revenue?
Okay. So at what point would we look at those issues?
That would be probably best looked at as part of a development agreement tied to a specific plan.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
If I could follow up on that. So say, you know, like for example, with the Northeast Ridge. So as part of the HCP and their property taxes, they have to pay X amount of dollars to, for habitat restoration on the mountain. You could have some kind of mechanism in place for properties, you know, out of the Baylands and they, that money goes towards maintenance of these public facilities and...
There's ways of setting it up. There's some limitations that you would have, but that would be part of the discussion, as I mentioned, with a development agreement and tied to the specific plan and its description of onsite maintenance.
Yeah. You know, I like, you know, when you brought, you know, the situation with the pool.
Right.
Right. I mean, here, you know, the city, I mean, it's a great asset for the community, but it costs the city $400,000 a year, you know, out of the general fund to operate the pool. So, I mean, if you're going to have these public entities, I mean, amenities out of the Baylands, the Baylands should be self-sufficient.
Right.
And have those money mechanisms in place.
There's a very basic general plan policy that most cities have, and I think you have in the '94 general plan, that is, needs to be enforced, you know, along that line. It says, "Development shall pay for itself." And so, you know, that is really clear in terms of infrastructure and capital facilities. But part of what will be discussed in the, when we get to the economics, is development paying for itself in terms of ongoing operations and maintenance.
Absolutely.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And then, in the beginning, you talked about the water and that the projection is that the cities, citywide water demands outside of the Baylands through 2030 would be greater than what the SFPUC could supply. So even regardless of what gets built out at the Baylands, we're going to need more water.
Correct.
What is the basis for that, for that analysis?
I think, Randy, you want to?
We looked at known projects. We looked at expected build out of non-Baylands and non-approved condition projects out at Sierra Point. We looked at water trends used. We looked at our existing individual supply guarantee and that future number exceeds what we currently have.
So maybe, is that why you were asking what the minimum would be? Because you were saying that even with no project, we would still need more water. Is that why you asked that?
Yes.
That question?
Yeah.
Just tying it all together?
Yep. Okay. So are there any other final council questions before we go to public comment?
Ready to hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to move over to public comment. As a reminder, each speaker has up to five minutes and there's a light system. Just want to explain it because last time people kind of were caught by surprise. So you'll see the green light, then the yellow light come on when, I think, is it 30 seconds? Or is it? One minute left at yellow. And when it's red, it means your time is up. So please do, you know, wrap up what you're saying once the light comes on. So we'll start with the slips. And if you would like to speak, you can hand a slip to Ingrid. The first up is Paul Buschall.
Thank you, council and staff and everybody that's here tonight. Paul Buschall, Brisbane resident. So I have a couple comments. One is regarding the water. And I don't believe we would have to make any special agreement with any districts like Oakdale for water if housing wasn't an issue. I do agree with the need for redundancy with the new water tank, although there isn't a site that's been selected. It would make sense that it would probably be somewhere on the Levinson property because of the SFPUC Crystal Springs Pipeline 1 and 2 that are on that property, as well as our service for that region on Main Street, which is, my understanding, could be larger. And very little water is used from that service, which is a big service that serves that region. I know that housing isn't allowed in the general plan, but there are some possibilities that housing could be allowed out there aside from the general plan. I like the mixed-use idea for industrial. I think it would serve the city and the region for us to annex the northern portion of the Baylands to San Francisco for the housing that the developers want to put in the Baylands because they need that housing in order to do their development. But the city wants to do a transit hub and they need that connection into Geneva to 101. So if we allow the city to annex the northern portion to put housing in for the developer, which they desperately need to move on with their project, we can make an agreement that they have to make the extension into 101 because there's no provisions that say that has to be done. And so, you know, yes, we need a tank. What is it, 500,000 gallons to a million gallons or whatever they're going to determine to have redundancy for fire and such? So I think we could serve the whole region by allowing an annexation to move forward with housing in mind. So one of the other things that I'm concerned with on the properties is, is the water tank location. You know, the Levinson property is a wildlife corridor. It's the only property that's really connected to public transportation for people to get up on the mountain. You know, it'd be nice one day if we can acquire that land and the Peking Handicraft property. So it's either the Levinson property or Ice House Hill, which doesn't make sense to put a water tank there because the, you know, I mean, there is, at North Hill, there's, you know, there's also a service, but wherever it goes, I would hope we can spare the Levinson property and Ice House Hill. I couldn't really discuss much of that in the draft environmental impact report because there was no site located for a water tank. So with that said, I'm confident that the SFPUC would agree that the 400 acre feet per year is really nothing that would impact them. So I hope we could pursue something on that magnitude as far as annexing the property. One of my concerns as far as facilities goes is that, you know, we talk about a library because of the housing. We talk about the needs for the schools because of the housing. I mean, the high school districts didn't want a charter high school because it would impact their overhead by losing students. Same with the Bay Shore District. I mean, the Bay Shore District couldn't handle the students that would be coming in. And the idea about people that work there, their students can come to our schools, that's true. That's the Allen Bill, but that doesn't guarantee enrollment. That's only if there is availability, that through the Allen Bill, people that work in your town, their kids can go to your schools. So that's not like a given. It's not like, because you work here, your kids go to our schools. So with that said, I'm really kind of disappointed that our Public Works was never mentioned as far as for facilities. And before we ever think about building a gymnasium or a library or any other public facilities in Brisbane, we need to think about our Public Works, who protect our health and safety and our quality of life in Brisbane. So, you know, they're like, they're like in the worst place anywhere in Brisbane to have a facility that we would need at a moment's notice, especially if there was an earthquake where they're prone to liquefaction. They're right near the gas pipelines that go to the tank farms, they're near the tank farms. I mean, there's, there's lots of negatives that are attributed to what our Public Works is faced with. But I would hope when we think about facilities, we think about our Public Works first and make that a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Clara Johnson.
It's a long way from back there. My comments are on the inadequacy of the water supply agreements, which Mr. Zola discussed in kind of detail, something I wanted to emphasize, and that is that it's not a binding agreement. It is not an irretrievable commitment of resources. What it does do is outlines that the city of Brisbane is responsible to develop an exchange of water between OID, Modesto Irrigation District and the City of County of San Francisco. About the 2,400 maximum acre feet per year, that in the agreement there is an explanation of what you have to pay. You have to pay for what you begin taking water. You have to pay for the full 2,400, whether you use it or not, but you pay at a lower rate. If you don't use it, it's $100 an acre foot. If you do use it, it's $500 an acre foot. So just, just something to think about. They think that that's what they're going to get. And last year, the Department of Water Resources announced that it was looking into regulating pre-1914 water rights. So it should be in the press. The Modesto Irrigation District facilities will be needed to move the water that Brisbane buys. They sent comments to the draft EIR on 11/21/2013. They complained bitterly that they have not received any communication whatsoever from Brisbane about the potential need to use their facilities. They only received the draft EIR. They recently received a phone call from the city. The Modesto Irrigation District states that it's mindful that SEQA is to be expansively interpreted in order to provide maximum evaluation and consideration of potential direct and indirect environmental effects of a proposed project. It cites two court cases and SEQA Guidelines 15003A and 15003H. They also mentioned that the lead agency, which would be Brisbane, must consider the whole of the action, not simply its constituent parts, when complying with SEQA and SEQA Guidelines 15003H. MID stated that Brisbane failed to consult them, a responsible agency, and cited six guidelines of SEQA that mentioned opportunities to consult that Brisbane ignored. MID commented that draft EIR neither fully describes the whole project nor adequately addressed the impacts of the project as a whole. They go on to state that numerous cases repeatedly state a general principle that an accurate, stable, and finite project description is the indispensable prerequisite to an informative and legally sufficient EIR. They cite other case law in SEQA Guidelines 15063A1 that state, "The SEQA document must consider all phases of project planning and implementation. Furthermore, under this rule, a lead agency may not limit environmental disclosure by ignoring the development or other activities that will ultimately result from an initial approval." And they cite the case. And I have provided the city clerk with a copy of these comments and the documents, the term agreement, comments from Modesto, comments from the SFPUC, and response to comments to MID and SFPUC and the master response number 29. So Ingrid has those. MID mentions that the project depends upon a predicated, and is predicated upon a multitude of intermediate water agreements and complex exchanges and transfers involving both the Stanislaw and the Tuolumne Rivers. These transfers are sketchily described. The incomplete description contributes to potential environmental impacts being unaddressed in the EIR. The result is that the basic statutory goal of SEQA is not being met. It does not comply with SEQA's mandates. And I'd like to say now, because I'm on yellow, that the Public Affairs Officer of MID yesterday stated that they stand by their comments. They don't feel that the master response number 29, neither the specific responses addressed their concerns. The...
Yeah, we did receive a follow-up email from them, Clara.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we did ask staff about...
Did they say that they stood by their comments?
Pardon me?
I just wondered if they said that they, I don't know if I can ask. Did they stand by their comment?
Yeah. And staff had responded, and they're going to follow back up again with them.
Well, both SFPUC and MID have stated that they don't have enough information based on the DEIR to enter into any agreements with Brisbane, period. So if you don't intend to give any more information to them, then they don't intend to enter an agreement with it. They've been very clear on that. And to me, it's just like the rest of the EIR. It's an inadequate information that does not allow good analysis and really doesn't satisfy the law as it was intended to show the impacts. Thank you. Can I make one comment about the Melrose District?
Sure.
The, at various places and at the BB CAG, I'm not speaking for them, the Safety and Hazard District is really something to consider, or hazards, I'm sorry, Safety and Hazard Abatement District, because it would allow you a way to have a voice and to have somebody to receive the monitoring reports that may come in forever and which are huge. You know, you'll need a staff person of some kind to deal with them so that you would really kind of know what was happening in terms of the monitoring from year to year. Sometimes I think that you're being told things that minimize the issues that are a part of having so many hazardous chemicals out there and maybe having something that was ongoing. And, uh, maybe having something that was ongoing would help you realize how dangerous it potentially is. And you might want to have a police substation because you're more than doubling the population that you have here. And that's a physical item that would have to be placed out there that they could pay for. Thank you.
Thank you, Clara. Corey Smith.
Corey Smith, speaking on behalf of the San Francisco Housing Action Coalition. Want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here in front of you tonight. First thing I really want to focus on is kind of something that we had been previously alluded to and told about, and I think was really highlighted in the previous presentation, and really is going to be a benefit of a mixed-use project to the current Brisbane residents regarding the allocation of water, which we also understand goes through the end of 2030, and a backup plan is needed at some point in time. At a certain point in time, it'll be the primary plan. The new supply from the Oakdale Irrigation District would quite literally provide the city with water going forward and would be a solution to a problem that either you or future elected leaders within Brisbane will have to deal with, and just wholeheartedly encourage you to try to be proactive as much as possible. And if there is a positive solution that can come out of this, I think that would be one that, that you would really like to be able to highlight. Secondly, in regards to the Water Saving Program E and just the need for constant water conservation measurements going forward, things like low flush, low flush toilets, multi-family unit metering for mixed-use, high-density, multi-family housing, and then just consistent water audits for commercial uses as well. All of these measures and all of the consistent environmental impacts are not feasible with low-density development. And in order for us to really be preparing for 21st century, 22nd century climate issues, this is really an opportunity that we have to put really solid foundation and really help the, the next generation and future generations within the city of Brisbane itself. And then lastly, talking about smart growth developments and how water is preserved within these developments. I go around to different neighborhood associations and Bay Area companies talking about housing issues in the Bay Area. And one of my favorite, favorite stats is that people that live in high-density housing actually take shorter showers than people that live in rural or suburban communities. The average shower for an American is about eight minutes. For city dwellers, it's about 70% shorter. So we know that generally speaking, dense urban housing is environmentally friendly. Infill developments use about 35% less water than sprawl developments generally. And considering there are going to be people that are going to have to move somewhere, a high-dense urban environment would be the most environmentally friendly way to house them going forward. And then just to touch on other services, having worked with UPC in the past regarding police officers, firemen, if there is a school that is built, additional teachers, I highly, highly, highly encourage you to include a portion of subsidized middle-income housing because that would allow those public services and the people that fulfill those jobs to actually live in the city itself, which I think most people encourage their public workers to be living in the city where they work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no more slips. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more just came. Anna Brathwaite with the Modesto Irrigation District.
Good evening. Again, Anna Brathwaite with Modesto Irrigation District. I appreciate Councilmember Davis citing to the letter that we did resend in today as well as one of the public speakers. So mostly just wanted to make sure that we confirmed our understanding of the EIR, at least as, as I've read it, and then to offer up two comments. And the first is, is that as we understand it from the draft EIR, the project site development is simply not feasible without the proposed water transfer agreement. So that's our reading of page 4.0-33, footnote 10. And from that, we also then realized that it's the city that's responsible for establishing the necessary exchange and willing agreements to accomplish the transfers. So those are our takeaways, and now is time to also restate what we said prior in our letters, that we haven't been con-- I'm sorry, I'm getting over a cold and I'm trying not to hack into your, hack into your microphone, but we have not been contacted as a responsible agency. We do think that there are at least two pieces that need to be looked at. Certainly, the first being that we don't actually have a position about your project. We don't know anything about it. We've never been contacted. There's never been information before our board within which to make a decision. So certainly I want to communicate that we're not here in an adverse manner. We simply don't have any information. And to the extent that this is the linchpin to your project, we'd encourage you to get started on those proposed agreements. Sorry. And then the second piece would be just to look at this EIR in a much more practical manner. So maybe firstly stating, the only project facilities that are at issue here don't belong to the city. So it's the SFPUC and MID that own all the facilities involved. And we are the two parties that have offered up comments. Sorry, our comments say that this is not a feasible project. We, MID, again, don't have enough information to make a decision. And the SFPUC has clearly stated that using their storage facility is not a feasible mitigation measure. Maybe secondly would also be to mention that the water quality control planning process is currently underway, and in that proposal, up to 60% of the unimpaired flow of the river is looking to be dedicated for strictly in-stream purposes. And so it won't be available for anybody's water supply. Not ours, not SFPUC's, and certainly not to any of the agencies that roll from that, that roll from those first two relationships. And so maybe thirdly, and finally, we'd also say that how practical is it to assume that there's 2,400 acre feet of water just rolling around out there? The SFPUC has been in the business of water delivery for well over 100 years, and during times of drought, they were unable to secure the supply. How, how practical is it to, to imagine that it's now available to a wholesaler, member agency that's two or three levels down the delivery line? So I'm, I'm very sorry to have been coughing into your, your microphone, and thank you for the time. I just wanted to share those thoughts.
If you wouldn't mind just staying at the podium. I'm glad that you're here.
I'm, I'm happy to take questions.
You know, I'd, I'd like to be able to ask questions of you and then of staff.
Why don't we finish the public comment?
Could we, could we, um, ask Anna, maybe, I mean, that we're going to be kind of over early, that maybe connect with staff since you're here? If you're, if you're an authorized person to talk, perhaps there's some miscommunication going on from, from what we heard from, from staff? Cause we did address the letter that was brought, and that was earlier. You know, we received that letter today, which was basically a copy of what was given last year. And, you know, our staff has said that they did contact your district, and perhaps there's something that kind of got lost in the communication and, and stuff like that does happen. So maybe since you are here, that you can connect with the staff and our attorney and ER consultant and tell them, you know, kind of what, what you need so that we can kind of get cleared up? Cause it's kind of difficult to have a conversation in a public hearing that's really meaningful. You know what I mean? We could ask a few questions and stuff like that, but I think, uh, really it's between staffs to kind of get clarity on it and then come back to us, you know, who, you know, go through this and--
Sure, and of course, I'm happy to be available, and of course, I'm authorized to speak on it. Maybe my title, I'm a staff attorney and I do their water issues. But I'd also put out there that our original letter was from 2013. And as between the draft EIR and the final EIR, we still don't know who they talked to. We don't have a name anywhere between them. And that's our general manager that signed the letter. So if anybody was going to mention it, right, he would have been the guy to, to receive the message. So again, not to be negative, but you know, it's a long drive out here. It's a shame the first few letters weren't addressed. And again, we don't have a position, right? I mean, we just, it's just disconcerting frankly to have our property spoken of in a completely different forum without anyone sort of realizing that's a problem.
Well, probably five minutes or 10 minutes.
Yeah, you know, clerk, I'd like to get some clarity.
Yeah.
Personally, myself. And she's the last speaker, correct?
The, yeah, I don't have any more.
Right, so, um, you know, I mean, what you're saying is a little bit different than what our staff, you know, mentioned, you know, earlier this evening. So I, I think it's appropriate since you're here and, and from what you're saying, there hasn't been any communication. Well, hey, you know, no--
And I'm more than happy to, to take a name and just be wrong. I mean, happy to be wrong, but you know, two environmental documents into it without a name or contact information, right? So--
I mean, you know, and the mayor can ask the questions if you, if you'd like.
Sure, so I just, um, I, I, I'm happy to allow questions, you know, if you're, if you're willing to answer them, but I do want to make sure there aren't any other public comments first. So why don't you take a seat and stay, stick around, and we'll get through the public comment and then come back to you. So is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I want to support what Clara Johnson said. We have a couple of different agencies that are overlooking the toxins in the Baylands. And I personally want to make sure that Brisbane play, is, is a player in this, that we have some kind of a oversight group that continues to look at the various toxins in the buildings, in the build-out. Because I think it's very easy to, um, just have a change in administration, you know, things just fall through the cracks, the way they're doing the funding can fall through, and, and things change. And this is our land and our citizens who are going to be impacted by any problems with the toxins. And I have always been very interested in having some kind of a Brisbane oversight board of some sort that kind of keeps track of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to you, Paul, since you did speak, I believe, already, is there anyone else that would like to speak, Barbara, about?
I don't have much I want to say tonight. Um, I just wanted to point out that there's a really interesting letter in one of the appendices that says that the gray water recycling plant will be built up front if no water supply is found for the Baylands. Um, and so that, I thought that was really interesting. I've talked with people about, you know, what if, we had some aspirational ideas about what if the Baylands could provide gray water recycling for the city of Brisbane as well. We realize that that's probably a low feasibility item because you'd have to pipe the water over there, and then, as Mr. Zola pointed out, there was not need for, the landscaping did not require that huge amount of gray water, um, out in the Baylands. So presumably you would then pipe the processed gray water back to serve, uh, fields in town, probably not feasible, but I just want you guys to, you know, keep thinking about that as, at least as an aspirational idea. Thanks. Oh, and I support the things that Clara said.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, Deb.
Hi, thank you so much for letting me speak for you, councilmembers. Deb Horn from Brisbane. Just a couple of quick comments, and I want to thank Anna for driving all the way out here to, um, speak to us. Since I did read her letter, it was very clear that there was really no way to deliver the water. So, so it's one of my problems I'm having with the EIR in general. There's feasibility studies, there's what I think are aspirational things because they're not grounded in what is really practical and doable, like water delivery. That letter was very clear, can't be done. So there's just, I just have, as, as she says, she's disconcerted. I, I, I've been disconcerted about so many unknowns about toxins. There's just a lot of parts around the EIR that I think are inadequate, and clearly water, I think, is pretty obvious tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak who hasn't yet spoken? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
So if I can try to help you out a little bit here. So, um, staff is ready to respond, I think, to the testimony that you received from the attorney from MID. Get some basic information out there. I do agree with Councilman Conway that probably the best way for us to move forward is to have a conversation, although I do appreciate the council's desire to have some just basic questions answered. So we'll try to accommodate both of those approaches. And if you don't have any objection, I'll have John and Lloyd start off by responding to the general thrust of her comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Did Paul want to say something else?
Well, I was going to come back to that after, if that's okay. Okay. Okay, go ahead, John.
Uh, well, just in terms of the SEQA documentation, MID was provided a copy of the notice of preparation in 2012. They, there was no response from them as to my recollection to the NOP. The EIR was released. We received the November 2013 comment letter on the draft EIR. We provided a response, which is in the final EIR, and was provided to MID as required by state law on SEQA. It's included in the final EIR. And MID did not attend any of the city council, I mean, the planning commission hearings regarding this project. There was no correspondence from MID subsequent to the city publishing our response to their letter. So that in terms of is the record on this project. The city did comply with our SEQA obligations to consult with the responsible agency, and we stand by the work that was done. Certainly, legal counsel can speak to some of the substantive aspects of, of the claims in the letter if you're so inclined. Otherwise, I might turn it over to the city engineer who's had more interactions with them on the terms of the, of the water deal over time.
Okay, Randy?
Sure, ma'am. So, um, this has been a process that's been going on for a long time. As you know, it's really the developer's primary responsibility to bring the water to the project. And so I, I've been involved periodically in conversations of the developer and his legal counsel, Mr. Berliner, have had on this. This is going back to early, early 2010, and it's been a little bit of a challenge. MID, I think, has gone through a number of very exciting years. There, the very first conversation I had was with the, the general manager, Alan Short, and their legal counsel, Tim O'Laughlin, and those people changed over in 2012. After receipt of their letter in 2013, we did go out there and visit them in 2014. At that time, we met with then-general Manager Roger Van Hooi and their legal counsel, Joy Warren. We actually brought a copy, and I don't remember which document it was, it was the NOP or something, or a document afterwards was sent, where we had a delivery receipt that said, hey, we sent this to you guys. And they're like, oh, well, that person's not here anymore. And at that point in time, we had sort of respectfully requested, well, maybe based on this, you could change this earlier letter that said you've never received any documents, and they declined to do that, which, which is fine, which is understandable. And now we're on our third general manager since I've been involved in the project for seven years or so, so, and, and as well as, as third legal counsel. So, you know, I think I'll let others speak as to how complete we have to take this down a path when you're talking about a term sheet and when you're talking about a general plan level, but, but it's not factually correct that we haven't been in conversation with MID. We've been in conversation with a lot of different people. And I know, Anne, I think you've been there since, what, 2013, 2014, and probably hired a new Joyce term, right? So there, there's been a lot of transition there, and sometimes people on that end can pick up the phone too and call back. And our number's in the book.
You need to come to the mic. Please. You need to come to the mic, please. Okay. Thank you, Randy. Would our legal counsel like to add anything to that?
Well, I, you know, I could speak more to the sort of level of analysis that's required. I mean, I think we've gone over this pretty exhaustively in the workshop and then in Lloyd's presentation. But I think we just need to be clear about what it is that this EIR is analyzing, as that I think the council understands. This EIR is not analyzing a water supply agreement. It is analyzing general plan level and a specific plan. And in compliance with the Water Code, there's a water supply assessment that was prepared for the specific plan. But there is no specific site development that has been proposed, and therefore no requirement for an assured water supply or an agreement, and frankly, no way to craft an agreement without any understanding of what the city might approve out on the Baylands. So I think the contention that the analysis is inadequate to support a water supply agreement, I think, if you put it in context of what we analyzed, we all understand that a site-specific SEQA analysis will be prepared prior to any approval of a water supply agreement. But we're just not there yet. So I think council understands this concept. But just to kind of stress what we're doing here in this approval process versus what may happen down the road depending on what you decide to do with the general plan amendment and/or a specific plan.
Thank you for that clarification. So if you wouldn't mind coming back up to the podium, I'm going to allow my colleagues to ask some brief questions.
Sure. And if maybe I could just respond to a few small points.
Sure.
Certainly to confirm Mr. Brolts' roll call of leadership change. That is, that is absolutely true. You know, but I'd also say that that's why, you know, the pomp and circumstance and officiousness of contacting the board directly and getting their approval, which is what's necessary, is, you know, so important. So, and then as to why we wouldn't reach out, this isn't our project. We don't have a dog in this fight. We, if, if the board doesn't approve it, that's not, that's not our project. So, so, so I don't know where we would kind of independently decide we needed to get involved in someone else's project. I'm sort of here today to just, again, we don't have anything in front of our board to offer as an opinion. And in my second point was just much more about just taking a practical eye at this project. I have no desire to go around with your, your city attorney on, on SEQA law at all. The letter speaks for itself. You guys will deliberate. I mean, this, this is just reaching out and offering some practical information from someone who's way off at the other end of the water supply can maybe offer some information. So please, thank you for letting me offer up that return, and I'm happy to take questions.
Okay. Well, just, I want to say, you know, we appreciate you coming out here and, you know, putting a face to the water district. And, you know, now that we know that your suggestion is to have, have our city communicate directly with the board, you know, we hope that you will be able to help put our staff in contact with them.
Can we take about 10 minutes? Maybe, maybe they can talk and then come back and ask a few questions. But I, I need a break.
Yeah, no, that, hey, you know, that works for me, Clark.
Okay with you, Anna?
Sure.
Yeah, connect with our staff and-
So let's take a 10-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.